We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, May 17th, 2021 to order. Adam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
If you will, please let us stand as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by the prayer by our county attorney. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we honor you today in prayer and thanksgiving. We pray for our county commissioners and all who represent Craven County. Grant them peace that passes on understanding and amazing grace to sustain them when days are long and rest is short. Father, you are our refuge and fortress. You provide everything we need for life and godliness. You hear our audit, intercession, and smile when we raise our voices in praise and worship. We thank you for your presence, love, and grace. It is in your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Commissioners, you have had adequate time to look over your agendas that were provided for you at the end of the week. Are there any items that you wish to add or remove from today's agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Next is the consent agenda. You have there before us the May 3rd, 2021 minutes, the tax releases and refunds, sheriff's budget amendment for K-9 donation, the military spouse proclamation, the Juneteenth proclamation. And I'd like to ask that one F be pulled from the consent agenda, that we take it under consideration after we approve the consent agenda separately, and that would be for the St. Paul Catholic Church resolution. Are there any other items to remove from the consent agenda this morning? Hear none, do I have a motion?
To move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Today, we're honored to have a resolution before us in support of the bicentennial year of St. Paul Catholic Church here in New Bern, North Carolina. And we have one of their, I think, members here in attendance, if you will come to the podium and say a few words to our board before we approve this. And we welcome you this morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Kathy Bascom, and I am a member of St. Paul Catholic Church, and I'm also on the bicentennial committee for St. Paul's. And this year, we are celebrating our 200-year anniversary of the founding of the parish. And we have spent the entire year working on different historical events to educate our parishioners and celebrate our history. And we also want to celebrate the history with our community because we feel so much a part of the community. And what we're thankful for today is for you to approve for us a proclamation acknowledging our 200-year anniversary. We'll be celebrating events throughout the year. We started in January, looking back at the first 50 years, then the next 50, and then the 50th, and then we finally came to the 200th anniversary. And we found some incredible stories about our community and about the people who have served in the church, the early church. And I think it's brought our parishioners a new enlightenment of the importance of the accomplishments of the people in our past and in our history. So we truly appreciate your giving us this proclamation to help us with the celebration.
I'd like to just read the, on the second page there, as it ends, this proclamation. It says, "Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Craven County, North Carolina, that the Board of Commissioners has proclaimed May 24th, 2021, is recognition day of the 200th bicentennial of St. Paul Catholic Church, and the Craven County Board of Commissioners recognizes the positive historic impact this congregation has had on our city, county, and region, and their continued efforts to provide a spiritual vision for the future of our community." Commissioners, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. All right, commissioners, next we have departmental matters. First on the agenda today is the Craven Aging Planning Board, and we have with us, I think, Mr. Clayton Gaskin, their chairperson. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, folks. I feel like I was here a couple of weeks ago. We have today in your packet, I'm going to be looking at the form up in the top right corner, it's DOA 731. This is the county services summary form. This is the easiest form to discuss this from. We do not have yet the numbers from the AAA for the upcoming year budget, so we have based this budget on the current year's budget, and we'll make adjustments to it as we need to, once we have more information from the AAA. But Block A, where the block grant funding, well over to the extreme left, you'll see the services, the typical services that are provided with this funding. Block A is 90% of the HCCBG funding of all of those services, as designated under each of the lines there. Block B is the 10% county match that is required. So if you look all the way down at the bottom on Block B, $57,661 is what the county, the 10% that the county will be contributing. Block C, the next over, at the very bottom, is the total cost with the county's contribution, So that's what we've come up with at this time. There are still some possible CARES funds through the AAA that we discussed on the board, some of the providers may try to access during the first quarter of the year before that runs out in September. But that's yet to be determined.
Commissioner Liner, you serve on that board, do you have anything?
No, sir. Just piggyback on what Clayton had to say. This is really a rough, because we don't know what we're actually getting yet from the state coming down, and he brought up a good point. The CARES Act money doesn't run out until September, so we know we're coming back in for a change to that budget when it comes in, to try to get that spent. And we still have not got our allocation for Rebuild America Fund that's coming out. We know we're getting attritional money in that, so... This is unique again compared to last year, money situation. We don't know what we got, we don't know when it's coming or how it's coming, but the board did a great job with Clayton's leadership around here, just getting this far into it.
We tried the best we could to get something on paper to work from, and we'll adjust as we need to, once we have more information.
All right, any questions from the board's commissioners? Hear none. Do I have a motion that we approve the presented budget?
Make a motion to reprove.
Second.
As stated, for all the 10% match as well.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll on this, please.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Clayton.
Thank you. You all have a good week.
Same to you. Next, we have with us Ms. Kelly Walker and Mr. Roy Beeson from the Carts. We've got several things to discuss this morning and there. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll make the first two presentations, and then Roy will do the other two presentations. Carts provides transportation for Medicaid-covered services for Craven, Jones, and Pamlico Counties. Authorization is received from the respective Department of Social Services. Carts files a claim and receives reimbursement for those trips through a system called NC Tracks. North Carolina Managed Care begins July 1st, 2021. This program has a phased-in approach. Beginning July 1st, trips for individuals that are a part of the Medicaid Managed Care Program will be authorized by a transportation broker working on behalf of an insurance company. Reimbursement for those trips would come through the authorizing broker, not NC Tracks. There are two transportation brokers in the areas served by Carts. Carts, with the assistance of the county attorney, has negotiated a contract to provide transportation services for Motive Care. We are requesting authorization to enter into that contract with Motive Care as shown in your attachment 3A.
Okay, commissioners, you got any questions? Any questions?
Just got one comment. Just to make sure that the board is realized, Kelly is willing to realize. We started this probably 18 months ago, and then the state pulled it because they didn't know when they were going to start it. We didn't have a cost back then, so the cost is in here is what is going to be charged. But I think everyone needs to be, remember, or at least keep in mind, that this is not going to be an easy task for her, because she's not setting up the appointments and everything else. This is all coming from an outside source dictating down to her, so... And again, it's fluid, it's moving, so we've got to be patient with this, because I can see finger pointing coming, well, we sent it, she didn't get it, or they didn't send it, but she still didn't get it. So...
Thank you.
It's not like she's made the appointment, knows it's coming. We're relying on a lot of other people, and I'm surprised we only got two, and the other three haven't come forward yet, wanting to come aboard to set it up as well. So it's good that we got it. I think it's going to help us in the long run, as far as keeping money, cash flow coming through, if we can meet it. Not that we can meet it, I know this team can meet it, but depending on how the broker works out, so... Keep that in mind. It's not all their fault when it goes south, because some of it may not be their fault, because they may not receive the word.
Any other questions, comments? Hear none. We're asked today, then, to enter into a contract with Motive Care. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
Okay, and B is the second broker that we have negotiated a contract with, with the assistance of the county attorney, and we are requesting authorization to enter into that contract as well, which is one call, and that is shown in your attachment 3B.
All right, any questions from the board?
Just to make sure that I understand, these are two brokers doing the same thing?
Correct. With managed care, the Medicaid recipient chooses a plan. Based on the plan that they choose, there's an insurance company that backs it. The insurance companies have contracts with brokers to provide the transportation piece of it, then the brokers contract out with transportation providers. So we're entering into the contract, or asking to, with the broker piece of it, that the broker would be who would pay us, and then the broker would be responsibility for getting the reimbursement from Medicaid or the appropriate source.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep in mind also, so far, this is good, because it's only two brokers. When we originally started this, it was going to be five brokers.
Wow.
So, not saying it's not going to go back to five brokers, but right now, they've come aboard where they've got two brokers. So I think we're in better shape.
Yes.
It's going to be good.
At least we'll come in phases, so it's not going to be bam, everything at one time. We'll get to be able to get our feet wet and adjust so that it works for our passengers.
Any other questions? All right, we're asked again to sign a contract with one call. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you.
Morning. Good morning.
Today, I want to talk to you about the fixed route changes and request to set a public hearing. Bottom line, we're looking to set a public hearing for 6 July at 7:00 PM or as soon as possible thereafter to receive public comment on proposed fixed route changes. Carts had a transit development plan completed in June 2017 that identified the fixed route, or currently called our loop improvements. Since June of 2017, we've been working to identify funding to pay for the increased cost for improvement to the loop. This includes exploring sources of local match for the federal funding. We've developed a proposed improvement to the loop, which is, that's not as extensive that was out, as the one that was outlined in the transit development plan, but would still make a positive improvement to the fixed route service in a New Bern urbanized area. Funding would continue to be through 5307 CARES Act grant, which Carts has already received, to assist with the operating assistance in the urbanized area. Good news is the 5307 CARES Act grant does not require a local match, it is 100% reimbursement. And there are sufficient funds for this project through June 30th of 2024. After this date, continuation of the extended fixed route would be contingent upon adequate funding, specifically by the 50% local match portion required for regular 5307 urban area formula program funds. Between July 2022 and December 2022, an evaluation of the ridership and operating expenses would be completed to allow for budget planning in the spring of 2023 for the fiscal year 2324 budget year. I'm getting ready to make a presentation, which is attachment 3C, and it's queued up behind me, of the recommended changes to the fixed route beginning on 1 October 2021. Staff will be glad to take any questions or comments. At the conclusion of the presentation and discussion, we'll be asking that the public hearing be set for 6 July 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting to hear public comment on the proposed changes. After the comments have been taken into consideration, Carts will request an approval of the improved and extended fixed route to begin on October 1st, 2021, to replace the current loop.
Mr. Chair, do you need a motion to set up?
I think you got a presentation.
I do have a presentation.
Okay.
Yes.
Cue it up, okay.
The format wasn't showing up properly.
Roy, I think the package the commissioners have has the correct slide.
Okay.
So, I mean, I know what you were looking at, the graphic was wrong on that slide.
It was, and I think it was just a slide.
The one in their packet is correct. So if you, commissioners, and Kelly's got an example there, so you can keep kind of going.
So, while they're bringing this up, the background on this, in February last year, we had the work session, and we started conceptualizing what the fixed route could be. Based on public outreach from October of 19, or actually going August, October of 2019, we took those into considerations, laws with input from management and the board, to come up with something that makes sense. A lot of the concerns surrounded around, hey, we can't take the loop to work, for example, because our start time isn't early enough, and our end times are too early, where we can't bring people home necessarily. And we've seen some increases in the, that's good right there to start. Thank you. We've seen a lot of increases in employment trips on our demand response side, and some of these may or may not be able to be augmented through improvements to the fixed route. So we also took that into consideration, along with the stop analysis that NC DOT had conducted for us, evaluating our stop utilization. So what you'll see here today is some of the improvements that we've made, and I'll talk through conceptually how it works, and Kelly can talk specific stop information if you have any questions about that as we go through. The big thing is, how do we make the fixed route look different? Right now, we have the red and the yellow routes, they're the same standard Carts vehicle, the white, light transit vehicle with the blue striping. One of the things is, let's put an identifiable logo on each vehicle that is exclusively to the fixed route, and this is what we came up with. Going with the omnibus by Carts logo, it does distinguish that vehicle somewhat, and we're also looking at various wraps that would make, basically, take the inverse of what we have now as far as color scheme. So where we would have a white bus with blue pinstriping, the fixed route vehicles would have a blue wrap with white pinstriping. That way, somebody that sees a demand response bus and a, that shows up at Walmart, and a fixed route bus that shows up at Walmart, you can make the distinction pretty quickly on which one's going to be yours, and alleviate some of the confusion that we experienced in comments that we've received throughout. That would go on the three fixed route vehicles, and then any, if we had to use a backup vehicle for maintenance, we'd have a larger omnibus logo like this that we could actually put on there, as opposed to the red and the yellow magnetic signs that we use for our backup vehicles, that don't necessarily have the illuminated signs on, to distinguish what vehicle would be conducting what route. Next slide, please. Some of the stop changes that we've had, broad brush stroke ones, we've added several on there. A couple of the highlights in the Grover Ridge Apartments, now we're given direct access to that facility to get onto the loop. The Board of Education, Public Library, Convention Center, now that things are opening back up in the Convention Center area, we wanted increased access to that. Tryon Palace, History Center, that access is now a lot of retail, restaurants, and whatnot in the downtown area. And then the neighborhood Walmart, we've seen an increase in demand response requests for that, for that stop to be made, and a lot of those originate inside the urbanized area, so now we've added it on as a loop stop. The ones that have been removed is the old ESC building over on Simmons, Cooper's Landing, the mall, and the New Bern Family Practice. These were all based off of utilization at our peak performance prior to the pandemic starting. And there was, in the study, I think there was one utilization over a six-month period for Cooper's Landing, for example. We can still accommodate all these trips, requests that come through, through demand response. So there's no loss in service ability, it would just mean that it's a demand response trip vise a loop trip. Next slide, please. Looking at the construct of this route looks, instead of having a red and a yellow, and it's the same track plan, all stops are active, we can gain efficiencies as an organization by having active and inactive stops. So as you see, as we go through the route slides, the footprint of the actual route and the asphalt that that vehicle's driving on doesn't necessarily change. What changes is the time that a stop is active or inactive. For example, if we were going to use, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head that kind of pops out, that's active or inactive at any given time, but generally speaking, Walmart's probably going to be active most of the time. But our medical facilities may not be active all the time. Recreation areas may be active during hours that those facilities are actually open. It makes no sense to have a park stop at 6 o'clock in the morning if the facility's open from dusk till dawn, or, excuse me, closed from dusk till dawn. So we took all that into consideration, we came up with three route constructs, a medical route, an employment retail route, and an education recreation route. As we go through the slides, you'll see how we have, the stops will basically be turned on or turned off at specific times during the day, and that designates the blue route, the green route, or the orange route. Next slide, please. So this is what our map looks like, and where we see some increases in service capability is now we're reaching out towards the Board of Education area, that allows access now to the New Harris Teeter, Academy Sports, and all the retail that's out that way. Kelly entered in negotiations with a lot of property owners, and we could not gain direct access to that based on how their covenants are structured for that property itself with regards to public transit. But having access to the school board, or the Board of Education parking lot, does provide access with a sidewalk and mobility device access as well, with a lowered curb to actually get on that sidewalk and then continue to access all the retail that's in that area. Longer walk, not optimal for us as far as convenience goes, but it still provides access to those places where we've had people saying, hey, I want to be able to get there. It also opens up opportunities for employment as businesses start taking on more employees. The fixed route will be able to provide access for employees to get to their jobs. Next slide, please. So the medical route construct, as you can see, the footprint is not different significantly from the overall construct, but what is different is what's going to be active. At different times of day, we'll be stopping, this route will be stopping at different locations, and will transition and basically shut down for a period of time, where another route would come in and supplement based on what the demands are. So you'll see a lot of stop repeats between the three different route constructs. We still want to give access to DSS, it's a great hub for people to do things and hit a multitude of places. And then, where are we picking people up? So you're going to see Kensington Park, you're going to see Noah, you're going to see Colley Drive, you're going to see all the same locations for pickup that people are living. You know, the residence locations are pretty much going to be active the whole time, it's just what service facility, place to go is going to, is going to change throughout. So again, you're seeing the familiar faces as far as stops go throughout all this, and what it would look like at an actual stop is something else that we've taken into consideration. So instead of having all of the routes necessarily right there at the bus stop, all laid out, one option is to highlight when that stop time is active and working. So that's the stuff that we're looking at right now. We've actually got some weatherproof stop signs that we can actually identify, yes, this is a stop for Carts, and it will also have the route information on it as well. Kelly's got an example right there, what one would look like. So you could walk right up to this thing, if it does get vandalized or anything like that, it's an easy change out for stuff. If the ink fades and it's weathered and it starts getting hard looking, it's a lot easier to change out than having to go out physically replace the entire metal sign. And if we have any changes or updates, we can, this is a flexible enough product that we can make those changes and implement them pretty quickly. Slide, please. And then the employment retail, you can see that's a long stop list, it's pretty close to what the medical one looks like as well. And this is our effort now to increase fixed route utilization for what a lot of our demand response trip requests entailed. So this now gives us the opportunity to start earlier in the day and finish a little bit later in the evening with this route.
So, to make sure that I understand, these, a lot of these additional stops are because you have received so many requests, Carts has received so many requests from people to go there. So this is...
Yes.
This is consumer-driven?
This is, a lot of this is consumer-driven, and then what we've done, based on the consumer comments, is do the analysis and say, hey, based on when people want to go to these places, when does it make sense to have these stops active? You know, your medical facilities don't open up and start receiving patients until just before 8:00 in most cases, so there's no reason to have a 6:30 stop active on McCarthy Road. So when we did the analysis and broke down the route constructs that way, that's the big driving force in why something is on a specific route at a specific time. Where we currently have two vehicles active at all times on the fixed route, there's always a red, there's always a yellow, we have one vehicle that augments the midday so that primary AM/PM driver can take lunch. This one actually has three vehicles active on the route at any given time. So what was traditionally our backup vehicle is now a full-time service vehicle, and I believe we've added a vehicle into the plan going forward for another 5307 federally-funded exclusively fixed route vehicle to replace an existing vehicle in our fleet based on utilization. And that's forthcoming in the, was it next year or the year after? I can't remember. It's one of the two years coming up that we have that additional vehicle forecasted for purchase replacement of an existing vehicle. Next slide, please.
Are all your vehicles, bus-type vehicles?
We have all, with the, except for the fixed route, they're all 22-foot light transit vehicles. They have a 15-passenger capacity, 13 ambulatory seats, and two wheelchair positions.
When I, I went over this with the county manager early last week, he shared this information with me. But since then, I've observed the problem we're having with gas, and I'm wondering when, when you do the special calls, maybe you have to go to Vance Bar or Papico County, would it be more cost-effective if you had smaller vehicles, when it's just one person calling to go to, come in to go to the doctor, or...
So what we've done, because of the model that we operate under as a public transit system...
Right.
We don't necessarily schedule one-on-one trips.
Okay. But can you, but I thought I understood, maybe I misunderstood, that you can have a special call. Like, if I live in, say Dover...
Yes.
And I have a doctor's appointment in New Bern, I can call Carts, schedule a time for you to pick me up and take me to the doctor.
That's correct.
Is that not correct?
That is very, that's correct.
So that, this is what I'm speaking to.
What may vary is what time I pick you up for that appointment, based on other vehicles I have out in that service area at that given time.
So you have vehicles in that area, in all areas practically all the time?
Pretty much.
I see.
We've got, that is what, exactly what our demand response service is, and once we take those calls in, so you call and you want to schedule your appointment, your appointment may be at, let's say, a... at, let's say, 11:00. I have a vehicle that's operating in that area that's going to drop off at the Jones County Senior Center, let's say.
He explained that to me.
At about 9:00 in the morning.
I might not go exact, exact time, y'all.
So our model is, we can get you there for a lot cheaper price.
Right.
But your trade-off is going to be the time that you're on the vehicle, the number of passengers you may be on there, and the time I pick you up. People that want to go point-to-point, we recommend going with a cab service. Either the premium service that's going to exclusively get you there, Uber, Lyft are very similar to that. But for us to fall into or maintain our funding as a public transit system, we have to not exclusively do one-on-one trips.
Okay.
Now, there's always exceptions to that, don't get me wrong. Sometimes it's in our best interest to run a one-on-one because of the location, because of the time, and then the drop-off location's going to set us up to pick up three to five other people. It's going to put us in a service area that we need to be in anyway. But that's the art and science of how our schedules actually build everything out and dispatching gets everything out. Cost of operations, we're increasing capability, so there is going to be an increased cost over time. When we start looking at staffing, hourly mileage on the vehicle and the utilization over time, there is a cost to it. Several of the startup costs are only going to be affected in this FY. The good news is, we have 100% reimbursement with the CARES Act funding aspect. And we were, and Kelly was able to work it so we could draw off this all the way through FY '24, which is a significant thing for us. So we've got time to assess, we've got time to cost capture, we've got time to put a fiscal plan in place to support this prior to that 2024 expiration. So we can not have a sudden change because of funding changes or what direction we want to continue in the future, but we've, Kelly's been able to secure the funding for this construct through 2024. And as mentioned, as I mentioned earlier in the brief, the different gates that we would meet with the board to continue to get consensus on moving forward from a fiscal standpoint as well. Personnel requirements, Carts in itself, we are saturated when it comes to staff member to task. We have exceeded task saturation pretty much three months after I began here in February of 2019. So with this enhancement, it lends itself to bring in an additional person to do analysis on the fixed route specifically, to manage any updates or changes, to query survey information, to quality control the routes, and this person would also be able to do the same on the demand response side, so it would not exclusively be the fixed route, but this is the conduit to bring that new staff position into consideration. We went with the term from the Transit Development Plan of Mobility Manager, and we used that just to couch the tasks that would be, that this position would actually do, just as a point of reference. We've looked at several of our systems and how they define the mobility manager. Manager is probably the wrong term to use because of the lack of supervisor control that this position would actually have. However, all the tasks that are laid out and what the systems are calling a mobility manager mirror what we would want to have in a staff member that would be able to provide us that quick turnaround on analysis, data capture, surveys, and customer service quality assurance that we're looking to get out of this, as well as additional tasks that we would have internal to the staff for things associated with our operational model. Advertising, social media outreach, we're actually in that process now with our advertising campaign to make this thing work. We've got all the social media concepts put together on what this would look like. We've got brochures that we've already started printing out, initial drafts to get some feedback on. For example, you know, we've got the, it's a front-back now instead of a tri-fold for each individual route. It shows the actual route that I showed you in the slide presentation, and then it's on the backside, it's got all the times that these stops are active for this route. So we've got copies for you all if you need to do that. I would like to look at that as well. And it has the price on there, it also has the, you know, our contact information, and we can also use that to advertise our demand response capabilities as well.
And I just want to reiterate, this is proposed. We did this in a small quantity, just so that there's a visual concept. But this is not to imply that this is the route.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, again, this is just, you know, a takeaway that we can have available at the office, different locations. You know, for example, the Volt Center's got a kiosk or a stand with the current fixed route information, as well as the demand response information in there as well. So all the businesses that we provide outreach, we provide stuff like this to DSS, all of our county partners would also get the same stuff. So the bottom line on this thing, what the changes bring is a better quality and a much more inclusive service than we currently are providing for the urbanized area. And again, there would also be some trade-off. Our demand response would be relieved in some cases because we've increased our service times and our stop locations. So managing the overall operation of Carts would become a lot more streamlined, especially when we start looking at our managed care aspect of things that's coming up as well, and some other things I'll be talking to you in the next segment to help us gain efficiencies in all of this going forward. Next slide, please. Our timeline, it's a very aggressive one. You know, we're sitting at the D-minus-90 timeframe for us, and it may get extended a little bit. But some of the things that we're looking at, we did our first progress report in the beginning of April. We have a proposed public hearing timeline for 6 July. Our progress report to the county manager and TAB briefing would happen in that August timeframe. Final progress report, basically our final conditions check before going forward with everything we'd like to do a month prior to our startup, and then October 1st aligned with the federal fiscal year is when we would like to start our services going forward. And inside of all that, there's a lot of other things that we would be doing internally, making sure all of our print copy is ready to go, all of our advertising's ready to go. We've informed all the agencies in detail on what the changes would be, and advertising that as well, so the public understands what that transition's going to look like. Because one of the things, one of the hardest things to manage out of this will be transitioning from the red and yellow, and then all of a sudden, I'm sorry, transitioning from the red and yellow, and then when do we go with the new route construct? And is it as simple as flipping a switch, or do we start doing a modified soft transition into that? And that's one of the things that, once we get feedback on when we can do the public hearing, get the feedback and all that, that's one of the things that we'll take into consideration as we go into that final plan. What does that week prior, week of, week after look like as far as transitioning to our new service?
Chairman, I think Roy and Kelly have done a great job, and it's been a process, I tell you, by pandemic and several other things that haven't made this easy. Most of the changes that you see that cost the county additional grant money are in the budget that I'm going to propose to you here in a few minutes. So while it's important to set the public hearing today, you're going to have to look at it again here in a couple of days as part of their budget. So just want to make you aware that this plan is built into there, assuming that you give us a head nod, we can easily pull it out if you don't want to do it, but it's there now.
Next slide, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I didn't mean to.
Next slide, please.
I think that was the last one.
I think that was the last one. The last slide just had guidance on it, so any feedback from the board at this point would be appreciated.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions? I think what we're being asked to do today is just to set a public hearing July 6 at 7:00 PM.
Sir.
Make a motion to approve a public hearing on July 6 at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion and a second. You need more discussion on the motion. You're none in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and then the next would be the CTS software agreement.
Yes, today we're requesting authorization for the county manager to sign the CTS agreement for Tripmaster Route Management and Scheduling Software. We're requesting to enter into agreement with CTS for new route management and scheduling software because the existing software that we have, RouteMatch, was provided to multiple Eastern North Carolina transit systems by NCDOT in 2006, and was implemented by Carts shortly thereafter. NCDOT covered the cost for the software purchase and associated fees for the first few years. Afterwards, each transit system became responsible for their own maintenance and licensing fees. RouteMatch has continued to be used by Carts since that time and funded through various grants. In 2015, that's when Carts became a split urban and rural system. The RouteMatch software at that time began to show its limitations when this change occurred. Software's challenged to properly account for riders varying fund sources when they're on the same vehicle. For example, when Medicaid riders, agency client riders, and general public riders are on the same vehicle, their trip costs are required to be all calculated differently and applied to the appropriate funding sources. Additionally, the software has been unable to consistently produce the needed reports that are required by both NCDOT and the Federal Transit Administration. Over the last few years, Carts has been exploring several options for upgrading scheduling software and has participated in demonstrations of multiple products. All the new software products that have been demonstrated, CTS and their Tripmaster software has proven itself to provide the enhancements and features that Carts requires to be compliant with funding requirements. I'm sorry. I'll start that line all over again. All the new software products that have been demonstrated, CTS and their Tripmaster software has proven itself to provide the enhancements and features that Carts requires to be compliant with our funding requirements. Its procurement can be structured as an annual operating expense as opposed to a capital purchase. By structuring the agreement as an annual operating expense, the procurement is eligible for 5311 Rural CARES Act funding. 5307 CARES Act funding for the urban portion has already been secured. CTS is willing to enter a month-to-month agreement for the Tripmaster software licensing and maintenance. Cost of the agreement is based on a per-trip usage and will fluctuate from month to month depending on the number of trips provided. Additionally, this agreement can be terminated at any time with a 30-day notice with no predetermined start and end date. The agreement has been reviewed by the Craven County Attorney. Going from no contract to a month-to-month agreement is a major change in Carts operations, and that's why we're asking for the authorization for the county manager to sign the agreement. What we've experienced with RouteMatch on the customer service side and the ability for us to get the reports that we need in a timely fashion is something that's been going on for quite some time. I have researched it personally with over a dozen different North Carolina transit systems, and based on feedback from all of them, this is the way to go. CTS, Tripmaster also has all of the modules for all the managed care providers that Kelly discussed with you earlier are already built in. So when we do those trips, it automatically populates NC tracks for us, so the reimbursement process is all done digitally at that point. And it feeds those systems automatically as it's set up, as opposed to us having to pull all the information, query it all, go to another database, and again. So it's gaining efficiencies inside the office on our staff that is already taxed task-wise already. So this is a way for us to gain efficiencies moving forward. The, for us to get RouteMatch as it stands today to something that we could use is going to cost $20,000. For us to get CTS the old way under a procurement process would have been about $50,000, but it would have given us all the fixed route enhancement management tools that we need, which we don't currently have with RouteMatch. It would have given us all those managed care tools that exist, which we don't currently have with RouteMatch. For us to build a RouteMatch comparable product would cost $72,000 in license and fees. So CTS has already undercut the RouteMatch cost for the same capability. We ran into a problem with procurement and reimbursement because of the way the CARES Act funding was written. CTS is one of the few companies, there's only one other one out there right now, does not have the same capabilities as CTS does, that was able to build a price structure and plan for billing that beats the requirements of the CARES Act funding stream. So now we have a green light from the procurement side on NCDOT and a green light on the reimbursement side from NCDOT to use this model going forward. It's a pay-to-play construct. So the more we use it, the more it's going to cost. We went in with about a, I think it was a $27.50, I think, was the monthly fee that we were looking at approximately, which is comparable to what we're playing the RouteMatch, maybe a little bit more, but we're gaining a lot more capacity, a lot more capability, and it's a lot better management tool, it's a lot more intuitive to use. One of the things that stuck out with me on the customer service side is the owner of the company will actually show up to a transit system, do a customer service visit, log on as a user, and test his customer service techs without them knowing. They don't know if it's one of our guys or if it's the president of the company doing it. And he is able to guarantee his consistency in customer service, and that's one of the ways he can objectively show us that, yes, this is really how things are supposed to work. It's a product I'm very confident in moving forward based on the feedback I've seen from several large, middle-size, and small transit systems that operate exclusively urban, exclusively demand response, and a hybrid like we do as well.
All right, any questions from the board? Here none, or do I have a motion that we sign the agreement with CTS?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here none, or in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all, appreciate it. Next, we have representation from the airport, Mr. Andy Shorter and Mr. Charles Cushman, the attorney. Good morning.
Morning. Mr. Chair.
Good to see you.
Commissioners, thanks for allowing us to be here today. If you'll remember, this is actually a part two follow-up to some property that we acquired adjacent to the airport, the Generation Baptist Church. Previously, we acquired the unimproved portion of their property. We just completed that last month, and now we would like to take the opportunity to make an offer to them for the improved portion, 634 Airport Road. And if you look at Attachment 4, I think we have the diagram there that you can see that. So when we were doing part one of this and talking to Pastor Amen and the Board of Trustees, it came to our attention that they were indeed interested in selling the entire piece of the property. We do expect that they would lease it back from us for a period of time while they find a new facility to use, and of course, we would be happy to do that for them. So overall, this piece of property just fits into our normal incompatible land use, anti-encroachment plan that we have at the airport that's, of course, approved on the FAA's airport layout plan, and it would be reimbursable through the FAA funding.
All right, any questions from the board?
I have a question. Andy, when the church finds new location to move to, what are your plans, what would our plans be as far as that structure? Are we going to knock it down? What are you going to do with it?
Yeah, that structure's a little bit different than the other structures that we normally have when we acquire property. Most of them in the past, at least the recent past, have been, you know, more derelict-type structures. Right now, I think our normal process is to look at demolishing the structures that are there, and I think we would go with that. But if for some reason we decided that we didn't want to do that immediately, then of course, we'd keep it and we'd take care of it and keep it in, you know, where it looks like a.
You don't have any, you don't have any plans?
We don't, no, sir, we don't have any plans for it.
Okay.
Other questions?
Is that church in operation now? Do they use it?
Yes, sir.
So they don't have another church to go to as president-elect?
No, and that's part of what, again, the Board of Trustees, you know, talked to our attorney, Mr. Cushman there, and that's what, they have, I think, two or three places that they're interested in and already looking at. And again, what they made selling the unimproved portion and what they know that the value of this property is, they believe that that's enough to allow them to move to one of these properties that they're looking at.
Mr. Chair, isn't a graveyard in area?
No, not of that church, no, sir. No, not of that church, no, sir.
Okay. Okay. This is the chair. Any other questions? Here in none, do I have a motion that we approve the airport authority to purchase this property here?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here in none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll. Thank you.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Appreciate your time.
Andy, one last real quick thing. The new roundabout, everybody should know that that's completed. It looks beautiful, and I'm sure that's an improvement, allowing people to not have to go through your terminal to get from one side to the other.
Yes, sir. Day one, minute one, that thing's been working as advertised, and we're so appreciative of NC DOT, and, you know, we've sent all our thank yous up there, and they did a fantastic job, and we're very happy with the results of that.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have planning for the Craven County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We have several individuals with us today from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. We're here to talk about Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We have with us two representatives with the North Carolina Department of Transportation that deal with comprehensive transportation plans for the eastern part of the state. We have a lady by the name of Amel Shaw, and we also have Chris Conley here. We have been working in partnership with the local RPO and the state along with Chris and his staff to come up with the plan. Part of the plan is dealing with criteria that the state has that has to be addressed in every plan. So there's a lot of data collection, and there's a lot of time spent trying to analyze information to be able to develop this plan. And at this time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Chris, who will go through his presentation here to be able to try to explain to the board the process and what we're actually doing.
Thank you, Don.
Mm-hmm.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you?
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So he mentioned a comprehensive transportation plan, and that we abbreviate to CTP. Basically, it's a long-range planning document that will assist local governments with the planning, who's involved in the CTP. It's local municipalities, RPOs, MPOs, the county, and the DOT. And then we have to do this due to general statute. Next slide, please. There's many benefits from the CTP. You have a common long-range vision for multimodal facilities, better integration into transportation planning with land use planning, minimal impacts on the natural and human environments, and many other reasons. Next slide, please. So we took a wide variety of different plans and incorporated them into the CTP in addition to public outreach. So here are some of the plans that we used. Next slide, please. And then, as I mentioned, we also did a public involvement. So we've done two surveys, and we had one local public involvement session where people could come in and look at the maps and big poster boards, ask us any questions, get their feedback, et cetera. Next slide, please. Some notable highway projects, so for example, future I-42, Havlock Bypass, New Bern Bypass, and NC-43. Next slide, please. So I took some maps for demonstration purposes. So usually, we have one county map. So this is, for example, highway recommendations, and usually, it's followed by two insets. So next slide, please. So for example, this would be the highway recommendations of the inset of New Bern. Next slide, please. And then this would be for Havlock, and as you can tell, Havlock bypassed there. Next slide, please. So one of the methods we use to figure out projects is deficiency analysis. We look at the base year, and we look at it, and we project it for the future year, and compare that to the capacity to see if there's going to be future congestion issues. And if there is, we look at whether or not to, what type of recommendation to put on it. Next slide, please. This is again for New Bern. Next slide, please. Then for Havlock. Next slide, please. So we didn't just look at highways for cars. We also looked at public transportation rails, pedestrians. These will be our public transportation and rail maps. So next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Then a bicycle map. So we do look at, for example, existing recommended and needs improvements. So we show both existing conditions and future year conditions. Next slide, please. So this is New Bern with NC bike routes on it. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And then for pedestrian, we did the same thing. And then each one of these has various insets of the local municipality. So next slide, please. So this would be like the New Bern MPO. Next slide, please. Havlock. Next slide, please. And then various other municipalities within Craven County. Next slide, please. So the next step would be hold our second public involvement meeting. We don't have a date yet due to COVID, trying to figure out to legislate on it. And then after that, we'll come back for adoptions. So each municipality would adopt, the MPO would adopt, the RPO endorses, and county adopts also. Next slide, please. And then here's my contact information if you have any questions, or I have time now if you have any questions.
All right. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many people attended the sessions that you held?
So the second survey through Metrocrest, which you saw on the side, was roughly 300 people submitted comments. For the people who did the actual drop-in session, I would have to look it up and get back to you.
Was it medium size, small, large?
I mean, we filled up the room.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Other questions? Now, will we receive, Ms. County Manager, will we receive, I see out there we got to adopt it, so will we receive a packet that has all that in it?
I believe you will. Chris, I'm not sure when we'll get that or...
Yeah, so like I said, we have the second public involvement yet to do, and then after that, we'll come back around for public, for adoptions. And it'll be a thick packet, actually, because it'll be like the entire report with all the maps, et cetera.
What is your timeframe?
It's still up in the air because of COVID. We don't know when we can have the second public involvement.
Do you have an ish like next quarter, next year? We're not looking for, I don't think, June 21st.
Yeah.
But a ballpark timeframe.
As soon as we can get it done, we'll have it to you.
So three months-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the world keeps changing with COVID, so...
Yeah.
Christmas 26.
Good enough. Thank you, George.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Ma'am, do you have anything to offer?
No, thank you. And for the public meeting comment, it was on the local news, and we had about 25 to 30 people attend it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Don, you have anything you want to add this morning?
No, sir. We will work with Chris closely to try to see what we can do to come up with that time period. We're hoping, hopes that some of the restrictions that the state employees are under and as far as having public meetings, we live.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank y'all again. All right. Next is Economic Development, Mr. Jeff Wood. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary. Got a couple of projects to brief you on this morning. The first is for your information, and the second one would require action. The first one would be the Naval X. The presentation started? There it is. You guys probably know, working with me over the last couple of years, I'm not very good with big words, so I'll let you read the big words, and I'll kind of explain what Naval X is as best I can. The Navy figured out a few years ago that their ability to innovate quickly is problematic, especially when looking at our potential adversaries. And so they looked at creating a collaboration between the private sector and academia called Naval X. Naval X is headquartered, I think, believe, in DC, but they have what are called tech bridges all throughout the country. These are off-base facilities. They cooperate with the local government, and they're given problems, set of issues to look at and attack those problems. The way that it was explained to me that really made a lot of sense was when we were at FRC. If FRC has a part that needs to be rebuilt for some reason, needs to have a new material used or has to be redesigned, they have a team that can do that. But when it actually gets to the point of prototyping it, it just goes into the normal manufacturing line, and it's not going to be a priority when there's a plane down. And so that new innovation sits there for an extended period of time. A tech bridge facility is meant to be able to help bypass that log jam so that that new innovation can go into the plane or the ship or whatever the purpose of that specific tech bridge is. So next slide, please. So a few months ago, we were talking to a company within the defense industry. They started having an interest in working with folks like ECU. I was fortunate enough to work with a gentleman by the name of Keith Wheeler that ECU's brought on to help them build relationships within our military bases throughout the region. Keith's a great guy, and he had investigated Naval X. To me, the way he explained it, it seemed like a perfect opportunity for us to diversify our military economy. You know, we are predominantly logistics when you get off base. This is the type of opportunity where we would be able to build a new entity that can attract the problem solvers that have those parts, that create those parts that are in those warehouses that we have. And so it starts off as a smaller opportunity. We have talked to the Naval X folks. They do want to build this. It is almost like franchising something out. Starts off small. It has to have local buy-in. That's a must. A new entity would be created, particularly probably a 501(c)(3) at some point in time. And one of the main things is it has to have a sponsor, and FRC has agreed verbally that they would be that sponsor. They would essentially hire the director of Naval X. And then there would be local buy-in from the economic development entities. So we would go to all the different groups that fund economic development activities throughout the state to help build this up. It's very similar to a project that I did a couple decades ago with less gray hair, where we created a research and development company back in West Virginia that was from the ashes of Union Carbon when Dow bought Union Carbon. We started with the director. Today, they have 150 engineers that work for them doing work for NASA, chemical companies all across the world. So I believe that this will have a potential for growth of, say, for instance, the special forces version of this in Tampa. They have about 25 employees. They're in about a 10,000-square-foot facility that has prototype printing, all different kinds of things, but they facilitate problem solving with about 7,000 different companies that work with them. And so it's an opportunity not only to have that 20 to 30 jobs, direct jobs, but to be a magnet to create, to have those defense contractors put an office beside the tech bridge or beside, or academia having an office. So coupled with this, we also have some people who are interested in doing some opportunities and investment. And so looking at downtown New Bern, being able to work with the convention center, for instance, to be able to facilitate workshops and different kinds of meetings, it's pretty exciting. Last slide, this kind of gives you an idea of where the tech bridges are right now and the groups that we've already talked to about being a partner in this. And so the main piece is FRC, but that's not going to be the last piece. I believe Camp Lejeune, who has also been involved, the sky's kind of the limit. These are kind of one of those economic development projects that are needed. You're not working with a site selector. You're not trying to figure out how to help a company expand. You're starting something from scratch, and the sky's the limit. You know, you can paint it to be whatever you want it to be. But the most important piece that Naval X has talked about over and over and over again was it has to have local buy-in. So for instance, once that 501(c)(3) is established, it has to be established with the support of Craven County, which helps us because this is something that other entities would have interest in as well. So I can answer any questions. At this point in time, I just want to get you guys, get this in front of you. We're going to be, myself and Jamie Norman will be hitting the road, so to speak, talking to different entities to try to gather support for this activity. I didn't want to do that without your, a little bit of a briefing and make sure I can answer any questions. And there could be at some point in time where I would come back and ask for a resolution or some level of support once it's got a little bit more meat on the bones and it's less conceptual.
All right. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I sat in with Jeff a couple weeks ago with some military folks and folks from the academic world. I got to tell you, I was quite impressed with the forethought that Jeff and the gentleman from ECU put in. I heard from some of our military partners who had been through SoftWorks, I believe was called in Tampa, and had actually been part of that problem-solving process. And what that tool was to the military, Jeff, is unbelievable. It really helps them accelerate a real-world problem and get it fixed, where they don't have to gee that, sort of keep greasing the cog through all the normal chains. They can actually get outside and do some stuff with outside partners. I believe Colonel Huber was there, Colonel Atkinson from FRC, and Colonel Ferry...
That's right.
...from Insulation's East. And I think it was Colonel Ferry who noted he had just recently spoke at SoftWorks in Tampa and was able to give some of his opinion, which seemed very positive. But they were all in. I mean, the military saw this as a big win for them, a big win for Camp Lejeune and Cherry Point to have it right here in their backyard. So that's all I would...
With it, and Keith Wheeler is a retired Navy captain as well, so he's not a pure academic. He's military, he's gone to academia, and that's why he was brought on to ECU, was in part to facilitate bridging the gap between academicians, research, development, and production in the economy.
Yeah. And at some point in time, we'll have NC State and other folks involved as well. ECU has, just to brag on them for a second, their engineering program is pretty innovative. It's interdisciplinary, which is what's needed now. You don't need specialized people. You need people that can do multiple tasks within engineering. They caught that, and they've done that. So I think that having them start with this, definitely some of the private sector companies that we've talked to were extremely excited about working with them. So yeah, absolutely. It's, working with Keith's been fantastic. And all three did provide their support. Mark Minow, who's the executive director of FRC, said he could already see some projects that would come into play. They would like to have this together yesterday, so...
Any other questions? Thank you.
Sure. The second one is a request for a public hearing, Project Excalibur. Craven County has been approached by a defense and aerospace company to purchase eight acres of property within Craven County Industrial Park. The purchaser intends to invest over $6 million to create up to 30 jobs over five years in defense and aerospace industries. This property's value, along with potential incentives from the county and such as the state of the North Carolina and Craven County, have made Craven County competitive. The company intends to be a key player within the defense industry within Craven County and work to market the area to their supply chain. Finally, infrastructure investments the county has made into Craven County Industrial Park is key to locating Project Excalibur in Craven County pursuant to NC General Statute 158-7.1. Craven County intends to convey for economic development purposes a fee simple interest in plus or minus eight acres of track of land. The track being Lot 19-6, two acres to be divided from Lot 19-7 in the Craven County Industrial Park. The value of the track is $20,000 an acre for a total value of $160,000, and the county intends to convey and sell same for such value. The county believes proposed conveyance will stimulate and stabilize the local economy, result in the creation of a substantial number of permanent jobs in the county, and result in increased tax revenue to the county. The Economic Development Department requests that the Craven County Board of Commissioners to hold a public hearing on these matters at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter on Monday, June 7, 2021, in the Commissioners' Room in the Craven County Administrative Building, and all interested parties are invited to attend and present their views.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have, not really to you, but to Commissioner, do we have to have a hearing every time we purchase property?
I'll let the county attorney...
Commissioner, this is...
Commissioner, this is under the Economic Development Statute, and yes, we have to have a public hearing, really before we do anything under that statute, including the sale of real estate.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Motion is to set a public hearing for June 7, 2021. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Others, motion passed. Jeff, we appreciate you. Thank you for what you're doing, sir.
Sure.
All right, next we have with us Mr. Gene Hodges, who's going to make an introduction.
I know all of you would much rather see Ms. Tarsia McCoy up here than me, but she is at the Meeting Planners Conference and is selling our convention center. So hopefully she can, she's recruiting some business for us. But I do have the pleasure today to introduce Mr. Robert Watson. He's our new Assistant Convention Center Director. He joined us in April. Robert has 24 years hospitality experience with a wealth of experience in event planning. He's a certified meeting professional and a member of the Event Service Professionals Association, taking words that he's shared with us. He's excited to work in Craven County. He's eager to help to continue to grow the investment that the county's made in the center. So I asked Robert to come up here and say a few words and just get everybody getting used to seeing him.
Good morning, sir.
Hello, good morning, Chairman Jones. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you very much, Gene. I'm very excited to join the team, Team Craven, and the convention center staff. I've had an enjoyable time working with Tarsia and her team, and also had an enjoyable time interacting with quite a number of customers and clients who have been calling us and dropping in and visiting the convention center. So it's very exciting to see that business is returning, and it's also exciting to be a part of the team that has, and part of the county that has invested very wisely in its convention center, where it's placed, the fact that it expanded some space during the renovation. It's fantastic to see that. So thank you very much for the honor of serving Craven County, and by all means, we look forward to the many visits that the Commission will also have over at the convention center, including later this week. And by all means, please let us know whenever we may be of assistance.
Any questions for Mr. Watson? Well, we welcome you aboard. Have you got something good to eat over there this week?
We're definitely working on that, absolutely.
All right, appreciate you coming before us today. Commissioners, before we get into the presentation of the 2021-2022 proposed budget, I'm going to ask if we would take a five-to-10-minute break, and we'll come back. The Board of Commissioners will come back to order. At this time, we will have the presentation of our budget, our county manager, Mr. Jack White. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. Wow, can't believe a year's passed, Commissioner, since we were doing this. Certainly been a long year. But today, Craig has already handed out your budget to you. The budget message from the county, the first document in your book, and I'm going to share that with you now. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, it is my privilege to present to you the recommended fiscal year 2022 budget for Craven County. As proposed, this budget incorporates the priorities and policy direction of the Board of Commissioners while continuing to provide the highest quality of services to the citizens of Craven County in the most fiscally responsible manner. The recommended general fund budget for fiscal year 2022 is $120,828,123 without any fund balance appropriated, and recommends that the ad valorem tax rate for fiscal year 2022 be set at 56 cents per $100 evaluation. The current ad valorem tax rate of 54.94 cents has been maintained for the last two years and is no longer adequate to support the increasing demand on county services and the enhancements to school safety as we head into the next fiscal year. While there is no fund balance appropriated in the recommended budget, local governments are strongly encouraged to maintain adequate fund balances in order to ensure against unanticipated events that could adversely affect the county's financial position and jeopardize the continuation of county services. As such, the county continues to budget and operate in a fiscally responsible manner, which has provided a fund balance sufficient enough to accomplish this while also remaining consistent with that of our peers statewide. Craven County's available fund balance was 24% of expenditures at June 30, 2020, while other counties with over 100,000 in population had fund balances averaging 26.77%, and all 100 counties averaging 29.07%. As we approach the new fiscal year, the county's financial position remains stable, and the outlook on the local economy is positive as we enter the recovery phase of the COVID-19 pandemic. Revenues collected for the first 10 months of the current fiscal year are $9.6 million ahead of last year, while expenditures for the same period are approximately $4.9 million more. While the pandemic produced a sharp decline in economic activity in the beginning of 2020, the recovery was much quicker than anticipated. Consumer activity rebounded at a rapid rate, resulting in much higher sales tax revenue than expected. As a result, sales tax collections for the year through April had been trending 8.3% higher than the same time last year. The county has also experienced higher-than-projected revenues from other sources, including $837,000 from the Medicaid sales tax, hold harmless distribution, and approximately $4.4 million in CARES Act funds that have also contributed to the county's enhanced revenue position. Expenditures and transfers out for the first 10 months of fiscal year 2020 are higher in many of the functional areas, including general government, public safety, and debt service. Some of these increases are one-time costs, such as the county's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, while others are reoccurring, such as four additional school resource officers added mid-year as the county prepares to take over the school safety program in most schools. The current fiscal year was also the first full year of annual debt service payments, totaling $935,000 for the convention center renovation and repair alone. The county ended fiscal year 2020 in a strong financial position, using only $5,000 of the $7.2 million appropriated from the fund balance during the fiscal year. Higher-than-projected revenues, along with the county's conservative approach to spending, limited the use of fund balance. Although the county did not make a transfer into the Capital Reserve Fund during the fiscal year, approximately $638,000 was used towards budgeted capital items and projects, thus reducing the fund balance in the Capital Reserve Fund by approximately $580,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. As the county has experienced over the past few years with Hurricane Florence and the COVID-19 pandemic, funding of the Capital Reserve Fund when excess revenues or savings are realized continues to serve as an important part of the county's financial position. This provides for future needs while helping to prevent tax increases and borrowing costs to fund much-needed capital items. There are a variety of factors that has a significant impact on the proposed budget. The current assessed value for fiscal year 2020 is estimated to be $10.01 billion, which is a 1.11% increase over the estimate of $9.9 billion used for the fiscal 2021 budget. The county has experienced modest growth in the tax base over the past year. The fiscal 2022 estimate projects an increase of approximately $113 million in value over the actual reported for the previous fiscal year. Most of the valuation loss to Hurricane Florence has been recovered and is reflected in the current projected valuation. Total revenues and expenditures each amount to $120,828,123 in the recommended budget for fiscal 2022. This represents a decrease of $4.4 million or 3.5% compared to the current budget of $125,187,280 through the end of April, 2021. Although still very much a factor, most of the decrease is attributed to budgeting less towards the COVID-19 response, as the rate of infections and demand for the vaccine are trending downward in the county and around the state. Property tax revenues are budgeted at a 2.6% increase, while sales tax revenues are budgeted at a 22% increase over last year's budgeted amounts. The reason for the increase in sales tax revenue was due to the methodology applied last year as the budget was developed during unprecedented times at the onset of the pandemic, with very little to no historical data to base revenue projections. Sales tax collections have outperformed the expectations of many economic forecasts as consumers spent more on taxable goods during the pandemic. Additionally, strong sales tax collections were assisted by the prior implementation requirement for online marketplaces to collect and remit sales taxes on purchases. Overall, the amount budgeted for sales tax next year estimates a 3% increase on the last 12 months of actual receipts, as strong consumer spending is expected to continue in Craven County. Transfers into the general fund from the Capital Reserve are down approximately $979,000 from the current budget. Capital expenditures and major repair projects were closely examined, and only as a result of the Capital Reserve Fund, many were able to be funded. Overall, capital outlay costs are down approximately $2.6 million compared to the current budget. Out of the total $3.9 million in capital expenditures budgeted for fiscal year 2022, $1.9 million is funded with transfers from the Capital Reserve Fund. The majority of capital expenditures funded in this budget include the maintenance and replacement of vital infrastructure in the areas of technology and facility improvements. In addition to the capital items funded in this budget, the county is planning for several major projects heading into next fiscal year. One of these is the continuation of the county's Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, software replacement project. With the accounting module completed in fiscal year 2019 and the payroll human resources module completed in fiscal year 2021, resources will be allocated in fiscal year 2022 towards implementing the cash sharing system, along with the utility billing and permitting modules. Phase two of the ERP project includes the replacement of the county's tax system. Both the property tax collections and billing modules were implemented last fiscal year, leaving only the real estate appraisal component to be completed. The completion date for the appraisal module is targeted for late 2021 and will be used to complete the next countywide revaluation. Craven County's Hurricane Florence recovery efforts will continue into next year with the restoration of the courthouse buildings, elevation of the Lawson Creek Pump Station, and the repair and replacement of the county's water systems telemetry communication infrastructure with fiber optics. All three of these projects are in the final stages of planning, with the final funding determinations being negotiated with FEMA. Other major projects programmed into the fiscal year 2022 budget include expanding utility infrastructure in our industrial park, performing HVAC control upgrades throughout our court facilities, and addressing building structural and air handler issues at the New Bern Library. Total salaries and benefits in the recommended budget are $3.4 million higher than the current budget. Of this increase, approximately $780,000 includes a full year of the 2% cost of living that was not funded in the original fiscal 2021 budget due to the pandemic, but later approved at December's mid-year budget work session. Additionally, $341,000 was added to the budget for positions added mid-year. Those include four school resource officers, one deputy sheriff patrol, and the reclassification of the roadside litter foreman from a part-time position to a full-time position in the solid waste department. The fiscal 2022 budget continues the county's investment in its greatest asset by recommending a 2% cost-of-living increase for employees. This accounts for both increases resulting from inflation, while also maintaining the competitiveness of Craven County in the current labor market. Recommended in the fiscal 2022 budget are a total of 14 new positions, and they are as follows: a payroll technician (3) in finance, HVAC maintenance technician, a sheriff's administrative support assistant (3), four additional school resource officers, one deputy sheriff patrol, a telecommunicator (1), a mobility manager in carts, two social work (3)'s at DSS, and a new water field tech in the water department. Total benefit costs are budgeted at approximately $1.4 million higher than the current budget due to increases in the county's health and dental premiums and the retirement system rates. So far this year, health and dental claims have been running slightly below last year's level. However, the budget includes a 5% increase to both county and employee premiums and accounts for $504,000 of the total increase to benefit cost. For the third year in a row, the retirement system employer contribution rates were increased in the budget by 1.2%. This accounts for $588,000 of the total increase in benefit costs and is the rate established under the retirement system's employer contribution rate stabilization policy, which is anticipated to remain the same through fiscal 2022. At this time, Craven County has not been notified if any increases will be needed for fiscal year 2023 and beyond. Overall, current expense funding for Craven County schools is recommended to remain flat at $22,189,991 per the Board of Education's request and continues the county's investment and support for our local school system. Craven County schools faces complex and varied budget challenges similar to Craven County. While the recommended funding amount continues Craven County's financial commitment to the school system, there continues to be long-term issues that will need to be addressed in future budgets. As revenues from federal and state sources tied to enrollment numbers continue to decline, the cost to operate and maintain aging school facilities does not. The issue will be ongoing and will likely need to be addressed over the next several budget cycles. Forecasted enrollment numbers by Craven County schools continue to show a decline in enrollment trends that will continue over the next four years in all grade levels. The current budget request maintains retirement system contributions at 21.68%, healthcare premiums at $6,326 per employee, and the local teacher supplement at 10%. Capital outlay requested is $1,958,000, a reduction of $37,000 from the current year's budget, and includes no Category 1 projects over $100,000. There are various repairs and enhancements throughout the school system, including boiler and chiller repairs, intercom upgrades, gym bleacher repairs, and renovation of the culinary arts room at West Craven High School. Also included in the capital outlay amount requested is $900,000, which continues the funding for the system's Apple iPad lease agreement. The proposed budget funds Craven Community College requested current expense at $4,101,425, which represents an increase of $172,125 over the current year. Part of this increase includes $28,733 towards additional personnel costs for salaries, retirement, and health benefits. The current expense budget also includes an increase due to the Volt Center expansion, including the new law enforcement simulator, diesel and heavy equipment programs expansion, and the new Small Business Center. Capital outlay for the college was budgeted at the previously agreed-upon baseline allocation of $500,000. Projects planned for this year include renovations to the lab floor in the Bosch Advanced Manufacturing Building, HVAC upgrades at the Bender and Purdue Buildings, chiller replacement at Kelso Hall, and miscellaneous roof, parking lot, sidewalk, and road repairs. All right. The proposed fiscal year 2022 budget provides balance and fiscal responsibility in addressing the many needs across the county while continuing to maintain the lowest tax rate possible for the citizens of Craven County. Craven County values the competitive edge maintaining a low tax rate offers in areas such as economic development and retirement relocations. As always, there is still the possibility that General Assembly may take actions that could affect the county budget. We will continue to monitor for those potential impacts. However, I believe Craven County continues to be well-positioned fiscally to address any challenges that may come forward. I wish to commend the department heads, staff, and agencies for their cooperation and valuable assistance in this very difficult budget process. I'd also like to thank our Finance Director, Craig Warren, who, there he is. Thank you, Craig. Assistant County Manager, Gene Hodges. Thank you, Gene. Human Resources Director, Amber Parker, in the next room over, and Budget Analyst, Sarah Williams, for their essential contributions in developing this budget. I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners and finalizing the fiscal year 2022 budget. The recommended budget shall immediately be available for public inspection at the county manager's office and posted on the county website. I recommend the board schedule a public hearing at 7:00 PM on June 7, 2021, and conduct budget work sessions as required, respectfully submitted. Chairman, I'm available for questions, but if there are none, or when that is over, if the board would, go ahead and vote to schedule the public hearing on June 7.
All right, let's handle that first, if you will. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to set the public hearing for June 7, 2021 at 7:00 PM? If you have no questions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right. All right. Questions from the Board of Commissioners, the county manager. I would just state to the public that may be listening to us, when this meeting is over, we, as far as our regular session, we will recess to continue on with budget discussions today here in this room. For the remainder of the week, we will determine a schedule at the beginning of our meeting today. Commissioners, I think since we first came together, there's been some things that have come up, and that's going to alter our schedule for this week. We're going to need to sit and talk about that before we get started in our budget discussions today. Just for the public's knowledge, for the remainder of the week, we will be meeting at the convention center when we meet during these budget discussions. Anything else, Mr. County Manager?
No, thank you. Look forward to working with the board on the budget.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Great job by the team, and a lot of hard work that went into this, and we thank you. All right. Commissioners, going back to our agenda there, we have Commissioners, going back to our agenda there, we have number item nine, appointments. Do any commissioners have any nominees for any pending?
Mr. Chair, if we may, I've been in conversation with Clayton on this regional aging advisory board. We're still working at, you know, he has an issue, medical problem with his family, so we'll try kind of that one. And at the same time, if I could, the emergent medical service advisory council?
Yes.
I would like to postpone that until maybe next meeting.
Under the current for today.
Under the current for today, yes, sir.
All right. We will defer that to the next meeting. All right. Moving forward, under current appointments for today, you have there next would be the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have here Chip Hughes, who seeks reappointment. Do we have any, do we have a nomination?
Make a motion.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Chip Hughes. Do you have any more? Not, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be the Fire Tax Commissioner, John Hawkins. John represents Coast City. I would ask that he be reappointed. Are there any other nominees? Here none, he will also be accepted by acclamation. Next, you have the Craven County Clean Suite, Mr. Michael Duffy, who seeks reappointment.
Recommend that we reappoint him.
Okay, we have a nomination of Michael Duffy. Do you have any other nominations? Here none, he accepted by acclamation. And then you have the Down East Regional Planning Organization, Mayor Dread Mitchell from Coast City, as the alternate, seeks reappointment. I would ask that he be reappointed. Are there any other nominees? Here none, he will also be accepted by acclamation. Commissioners, you have there the upcoming appointments that are expiring in June, that will come before the board, and then there's a second page there to that also. Any other nominations today from the board, any appointments? All right, here none. We will move next to the county attorney's report. Mr. Eric Grady, good morning, sir.
Chairman, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. I have only one item for your consideration today. It involves county-owned property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The property is located on Mill Avenue in Vanceboro with a parcel ID number of 1-V-08-010. We have an offer of $1,500. The cost of the foreclosure and the past due taxes originally at issue were $1,487.25. The tax value of the property is $3,750. As the board is aware, should the board approve this initial offer, it'll go through the upset bid process, and you'll see it again at a later meeting. We do recommend the board approve this so we can go ahead and start the process.
Okay. What's the desire of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion on the motion. Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report.
All right, we appreciate it. County Manager, you have anything else to add this morning?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think you'll hear enough from me this week, so I'm going to forego my comments for later.
All right. All right, that brings us to Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Mark.
Yes, I attended the hospital board's combining UNC as far as being part of the hospital board, and believe that they had a sufficient number of people there to vote it in. I think it's good for the citizens of this county, the fact that we will be able to have doctors coming from Raleigh rather than us going up to Raleigh to see them. I think it will help also, we will have doctors who will be in training here at the hospital. So in that respect, I think the citizens of the county made out well.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Commissioner Lina.
I think so.
All right. Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I met with the new New Bern Police Department Police Chief, Chief Gallagher, last week. I like his vision for the community, and I'm looking forward to help introducing him to the community. There will be an event at Craven Terrace on the 26th of May by the police department as well. And the Secretary of the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs will be at Cherry Point on Thursday. This is part of his listening tour of North Carolina. Secretary Gaskins is a retired Marine Lieutenant General, so he's familiar with Onslow, but he's not an aviator. So he's coming down to Cherry Point, and I'll be attending that with him as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Smith.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Commissioner McCabe.
Yes, I want to know, anyone had this invitation for the ribbon cutting for Friday?
If you will announce that.
Is the, say it again?
Announce.
Is the ribbon, excuse me, is the ribbon cutting open house for the veteran employee base camp, organic garden at 1235 Polley Street in New Bern, is on the treadmill for this month from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So all everyone interested, go in, I give the address at a time, and have a phone number when to call, area code 252-617-2848. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Chair.
I have nothing.
All right. I have nothing to bring before the board at this time. Mr. County Manager, how much time do you need for your staff to get prepared?
15 minutes would be adequate.
All right. We will then recess to reconvene for our budget work session in about 15 minutes.